Hello.
Hi.
Who are you?
Hi, Marion.
Hi Lisa, how are you?
I'm good. Debbie, you gonna make me a co-host too?
Yes, who's co-host?
Who?
Hang on, who was co-host? Trying to change my view, the exit full screen. There we go. Okay, now I can do it.
Okay.
There we go. For some reason, my screen changed.
Hi.
Our co-host?
Hi, Ross.
Question for Lisa or Debbie, whoever can answer it. As a board member, we are not allowed to ask questions, are we during this?
Where?
Yes.
So, this is, we're gonna, the format of the hearing is that the team, the applicant team is gonna present, then we're gonna hear public testimony, and there will be some time at the end for Q and A.
But if board members participate, does that compromise our ability to vote subsequently?
Well, you're not gonna testify. Yes. I mean, you could have questions, you can have questions of the developer, that's fine. It doesn't compromise your ability to vote. But this isn't an opportunity for you to, you know, do your two minutes of public.
Hit the button and you're on the record.
Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome, everybody. I'm Lisa Deller, chairperson for Community Board Two. We're here tonight with CB2 staff, members of the board, the public, and the applicant to hear comments on the ULP application for 6204 Roosevelt Avenue, Woodside, New York. Woodside 63 Management LLC and Mayor Norstrom Elements, Inc. are co-applicants seeking a zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment to rezone the southwest corner of Roosevelt Avenue and 63rd Street in the Woodside neighborhood of Queens. The applicant is requesting a zoning map change from R6 to, R6 and R6 C14 to a C44 zoning district. The applicant also seeks a zoning text amendment to designate the project area as a mandatory inclusionary housing area. These actions will facilitate the development of a new 13-story mixed-use building containing commercial and community facility spaces and 213 residential units, of which 64 will be permanently affordable. The format for tonight's hearing will be, the applicant team will do their presentation. After that, we will hear public testimony. Anyone interested in commenting on this matter can sign up for two minutes of speaking time. We will post, we did post on the agenda form a tiny URL that you can sign up to a Google Doc. We will post that in the chat momentarily. Written statements will also be accepted. We have a list of people that have already signed up in advance. If you have not already signed up to speak, the link to sign up is in the Zoom chat. We will post it every 30 minutes. After public testimony, there will be some time for board member questions and answers. Let me just explain some housekeeping rules here. Please mute yourselves when not speaking. If your mic is on and you are not speaking, we will mute you. Board members, please raise your hand using the raised hand function on Zoom to ask a question. And as always, please be courteous and respect the space and time we have tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn over the presentation to the applicant team, represented right now by Jordan Press.
Great, and I'm actually gonna turn it over to Lisa to begin.
Oh, hello, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Lisa Orantia. I'm Land Use Council from Ackerman LLP, and I'm joined by the co-applicants, Steve Leicher on behalf of Woodside 63 Management LLC, and Nicola Ayervasi and Kevin Albert from Marinostrom Elements. I'm also joined by Shiva Gomi from Baughing Architects, who led the design for the proposed development, as well as Jordan Press from Constantinople and Cologne, who helped us with our community engagement. So I'll turn it over now to Steve and Nicola and Kevin to introduce themselves.
Thanks, Lisa, and thanks, everybody, for your time tonight. My name is Steve Leicher, owner with EJ Stevens Group. We are a Queens-focused and based business. I myself was born and raised in Queens, went through high school and college in Queens, and have had my business in Queens for over 10 years. We focus on consulting businesses expanding in Queens and finding them additional locations. And we also focus on creating projects and places that represent the diverse communities that they're located within. Just an example, we recently took a large warehouse in Queens and converted it into a collection of authentic New York City restaurants, celebrating the diversity of Queens and all the authentic cuisines that it provides within it. It just so happened that, you know, coming out of COVID, we're providing, the project and the restaurateurs are providing a fresh start for restaurants. We're excited about this project, and we are excited to hear the community's feedback going forward. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over for an introduction to Nicola and Kevin with Marinostrom Elements. They are valued partners from the arts within this project.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Albert. I'm the president and co-founder of Marinostrom Elements.
Hello, my name is Nicola Ayervasi. I'm also the co-founder and artist director of Marinostrom Elements. We founded the company exactly 20 years ago in 2001. And our main programs, right now, we have presented the Emerging Choreographer Series in collaboration with LaGuardia Performing Arts Center in Long Island City, and the Young Way Program, after-school for children in collaboration with PS12. In the past, we've been collaborating also for the same program with Woodside on the Move at PS11 and PS15.
We were approached by Steve several years ago to be part of this project. We have a signed agreement, and as a demonstration of our mutual commitment to one another, are actually a co-applicant in the rezoning request. We're excited to tell you more about the space that will not only be a new home for Marinostrom Elements, but hopefully for many other artists in the community.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Before we get into the details, I just wanted to give a little color on our request and for feedback and support. I want to start by being clear about the realities of this site. You know, for many years, this location has been a one-story structure and has had retail in it that has struggled to survive. On this side of the overpass, the foot traffic is low. We've had some issues with safety and break-ins, and even to the point where I think the previous owner of one of these buildings attempted to open up, you know, a strip club. The retail on this side of the overpass, as I said, has always struggled. It seems to be more street life and vitality going west of the overpass. And, you know, some of the business owners on this side of the overpass will be here with us tonight to give some of their comments on what happens over here. So without any specific approvals from the community, we have a development plan to build a nine-story development here on the site. The project would be entirely market rate and would include approximately 120 units, retail and some commercial space. We would obviously seek to make the highest return on that and rent the spaces at market, like I mentioned, and we can begin this development immediately going forward. However, we wanted to come to the community and propose a better plan and a rezoning of the site. We believe in this neighborhood. We believe in this location. And we love the fact that it has proximity to two major mass transit lines, which makes this a perfect transit-oriented development. With all the talk about less vehicles, reduced pollution, et cetera, urban planners love sites like this for new homes and businesses. It discourages car usage and creates connections for people to link live and work experiences. So, in a nutshell, we spent a lot of time and getting feedback from the community up to this point. And we've already incorporated a lot of those comments into the project. And as we go through the details of this, you know, you'll see that peppered through the project, and we'll talk about what we've already included the community requested. And that's, so I just wanted to set the stage for the more detailed presentation coming up. Like I said, we're excited to move forward. We're excited to engage more with the community. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Lisa and Shiva to get into a little more of the detailed requests.
Hey, thanks, Steve. So here we have the bird's eye view of the project area at Roosevelt Avenue and 63rd Street. It's about a 41,000-square-foot triangular site that's situated on Roosevelt Avenue, which is a commercial corridor. And you see that it's at a transit hub between the elevated seven line and the LIRR rail. So Roosevelt Avenue is an 80-foot-wide, two-way street with convenience retail. 63rd Street to the east is, it measures 60 feet wide. And then along the southeast side of the project area, there is a parking lot owned by the LIRR, and then the tracks along the southwest side of the project area. The LIRR Woodside Station.
I'm sorry, Lisa, are you the person with the fire engines?
Yes.
Or you are? Okay, never mind. Go ahead.
Sorry, bad timing on that. So the Woodside Station has two entrances. One is on Roosevelt Avenue, and then there's another entrance on 63rd Street. And then, again, the number seven subway train runs above Roosevelt Avenue and has a station at Woodside and 61st Street west of the development. So within the surrounding area, you'll find one-to-six-story buildings. As you go out further, particularly to the south and northwest, you'll find buildings 11 to 18 stories high. So the area map here shows you that the surrounding area is a mix of residential, commercial, and transportation use. The site is currently zoned R6, and it has a C14 overlay along Roosevelt Avenue. Residences of all types and community facility uses are permitted as a right in our six districts, and local retail uses classified in use group six are allowed within the C14 overlay. So the development site is about 35,000 square feet, I'll find in red. It's currently improved with one- and two-story buildings before 1960, and it includes two non-conforming manufacturing on 63rd Street. And there are no existing residential or community buildings in the development site.
I just want to remind people on this call to mute yourselves. If you're not speaking, please mute yourself. Thank you. Sorry, Lisa. Go ahead. Now we can't hear you because you're muted.
Okay, next slide, please. So the proposed actions, we're proposing a rezoning, a map change of roughly 41,000 square feet, changing from R6 and R6 C14 to a C44 designation, and also to map the area within a mandatory inclusionary housing area. So next slide, please. So by rezoning the site, we'd be permitted to build an extra four stories for a total of 13 stories. The development would have commercial and community facility, art space, 213 apartments, of which 54 would be reserved for inclusionary housing. So the proposed development is larger, but it would include beneficial aspects that we'll be discussing more during the presentation. So as Steve mentioned earlier, without the rezoning, it's likely that a nine-story, about 120,000-square-foot mixed-use building would be built, and it'd be a mix of commercial and community facility uses on the ground floor and about 123 residential units above. While the 421A tax program requires affordability, it would be at higher levels and more equivalent to what market rate is in the neighborhood. So the proposed C44 district, which is an R72 equivalent with MIH, would allow for moderate growth at a transit-oriented site. So new development would be situated at an intersection of a wide street with transit facilities. This affords the open air needed, the open space, light and air required for additional density. And again, the development will be located on a commercial corridor with access to public transportation. Residential floor area will increase and allow an additional four stories when compared to an as-of-right building. And it would be required to include housing for residents earning low and moderate incomes. The allowable commercial floor area would also increase and allow a wider range of uses, including medical research, business schools, art, music, dance, and theatrical studios. Currently, in the overlay, you can have R6 commercial uses, which are generally retail stores and personal service establishments. And in a mixed building, they wouldn't be allowed to be above the level of the first-story ceiling. So now I'll let Shiva Gomi discuss the proposed development, and we'll hear more about the development's benefits to the community.
Thanks, Lisa. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity presenting this development. As Lisa mentioned, the development, the proposed building is gonna be a 13-story building with a total of 211,541 square feet of building. We are committed by, required by the zoning requirements to have 156 accessory parking, which we're putting in the sub-seller level. There's gonna be a proposed community facility and performance art area for about 7,500 square feet. There's gonna be local retail and commercial space on the ground floor and the seller level. And we also have office space proposed on the second floor, which, if you go along 63rd Street, it's gonna be the same level like the entrance, and I'll show you in the next slide. The amount of residential area that we're proposing here is 162, is about 162,000 square feet, which equals approximately 213 dwelling units. And 54 of those units are gonna be permanently affordable. Next, please. So this is the second floor schematic floor area, floor plan. And as you can see, this is the 63rd Street entrance. We have the parking entrance that, just to, in parentheses, it's gonna be attendant. There's gonna be an attendant for the parking. And there's gonna be a loading berth in the back for that commercial space. And we have the residential lobby and another entrance for commercial space from 63rd Street and the entrance for the community facility space that goes down in the cellar. Next, please. We are definitely incorporating sustainability and green features for this development. We are required by the Department of Building for any new construction to propose green roof and/or solar panels. And the developer is definitely looking to that. It's, you know, they are committed to put the solar panels for producing electricity for this development. You're considering high-efficiency heating and cooling system, low climate fixtures, air sealing and insulation, and high-performance windows for all the openings for this development. Definitely, the appliances are gonna be energy-saving. And we are taking into consideration the usage of materials, that the sustainable materials that are not, you know, harmful for human health and the reduction of off-gassing for those materials. And the whole point is to increase the indoor air quality for the residents and all the users. In terms of COVID-19 design guidelines, you're hoping by the time that this development is completed, this pandemic is gonna be under control. But regardless, you're considering to put efficient air circulation and, you know, high-quality HVAC system for ventilation. And also, in terms of the materials, as I mentioned, we are taking into consideration for, you know, high-tough surfaces that, for the common, especially for the common areas. So those are the two items. And I think I'm passing it to Jordan for the next slide. Thank you.
Great, thanks. So as a team, we were talking about, you know, the fact that this is such a transit-oriented site. And kind of the next question that comes up for us with respect to transit is bicycles. So obviously, a very big deal in this neighborhood, but the Roosevelt Avenue corridor, for anyone who bikes, you know, not a super area right here for bikes. And also, on the current city bike map, you know, if you look at this area, it's just this desert of city bike. We are really excited that City Bike is going to be coming to the neighborhood. My understanding from them and from DOT, they've done the visioning. They're gonna be coming, my understanding is, to the community board later this year and installing sites into next year, which is great. The other thing that kind of struck us is, for those who bike a lot, we're kind of sandwiched between two kind of main east-west bike paths. To the south, the Queens Boulevard. To the north, you've got the 34th Street Open Street. You've got Northern Boulevard, which should have a bike lane there. It was unfortunately bulldozed, but I understand is coming back. And you've got Broadway. So what's missing is a north-south connection between those. And we'd love to work with the community to try to find what the most appropriate place for that is, because we think that both the residents of this building, and again, just being part of the development close to this transit node, is, you know, begging for more bicycle usage and safe routes to commute via bicycle. We have also heard that it's important to encourage more bicycle usage, that people feel safe about where they store their bikes, aside from what is required within our building for bicycle storage. We're also looking at what the best way to provide safe bicycle storage outside the building might be. And we're gonna be reaching out to the MTA and New York City Transit as well to see if anything innovative can be done with respect to bike storage right, you know, very close to the subway stops. So I'm sure that there are members of the board who want to talk more about that. We want to be partners with you on this, because, again, keeping up with the transit, you know, theme of this project is really important to us. So I want to talk about the inclusionary, the mandatory inclusionary housing units. So both the community board and the council member urged us to come to the community with what's called Option 1 under the Inclusionary Housing Program. That is a more deeply affordable program where 25% of the units, which is about 54 units, will be permanently affordable. They cannot come out of rent regulation, the building sold, or under any terms. It runs with the, it runs with the building. And what that means is that there will be, there will be a lottery. Half those units will be reserved for community board members, so long as that policy is still in place. We're looking forward to working with the local elected officials in the community board to try to, you know, increase those numbers if possible, which is just done by really getting the word out in the community. Among those 54 units, they need to, at the deeper affordability level, at Option 1, they need to average at 60% of AMI, which is in the middle here. And what we think we'd like to do is, rather than just putting them all at 60% of AMI, that we would do tiers. So a tier at these lower rents of 40% of AMI, which has a studio around $600, a one-bedroom around $750, a tier at 60, and a tier at 80% of AMI. That's based on your income. And again, this was something that we heard that's very important. We agree. I'm an affordable housing person. I came from HPD. It's what I've done my whole life. So I'm excited that we can bring these units on, and we can bring them on right away. Right now, the HPD pipeline for 100% affordable projects is many years long. As soon as we get this project started and open, those units can be made available. I'm gonna turn it over to Nicola and Kevin now to talk about their programming and the community art space that we've envisioned in the building.
Thank you, Jordan. So Kevin and I have been living in Woodside for about, what, exactly 10 years, actually, in August. So we are your neighbors. And I actually see some names and faces that I've been encountering before, either on the community board around the streets. We live on 64th Street and Roosevelt, so basically a block away from the design project. And we care a lot about the neighborhood. We, as seen, the neighborhood lacking art spaces. We always, as a company, have to rent in Manhattan or Brooklyn. And we also see the possibility for, to enrich the community, but also to be thriving hub for the arts. We focus mainly in dance, and we're trying to focus for a form of dance that are not very successful in funding spaces, which would be percussive dance, and we'll talk more about later.
The kind of space we're envisioning is what I describe as an arts hub, a home for performing and visual arts. In Marinostrom Elements space, we will finally have a home for our program. Our Emerging Choreographer Series has sponsored 45 choreographers in the last eight years, and most of them have companies now and are self-producing their work. As part of our ECS Forward program, we are dedicated to continuing to support and foster these artists.
So our space will be large enough for rehearsals and performances, studio performances, and will be available for subsidized rentals. The reason why we do that, because as Kevin said, we have The reason why we do that, because as Kevin said, we have 45 choreographers ready to be working and rehearsing, but it's hard for them to find space. So when we don't use the facility for our own programming, it will be subsidized rental for these artists that we already have in our roster. We also envisioning dedicated storage. We are also envisioning for artists to be able to rent some office facilities. And, and both, we're going to have two studios. And both studios will be basically available with sprung wood floor. And one of them will be dedicated for rhythm and percussive dance such as tap and flamenco.
As per the community board's inquiry at the last meeting, there will be a, a flag signage that marks the entrance to the Arts Hub on the corner of 63rd and Roosevelt. Or as an alternative, we are investigating a slim kiosk USB charger that advertises what's going, what's happening in the art space and also in the businesses that are in the building as well as other community events. We will collaborate with local artist Zihan Wazid to create a mural in the downstairs lobby and possibly on the back wall of the building that faces the subway and Long Island Raro to make sure that the, the space is visible for public transportation. We've known for a long time that the current model of performing art spaces in New York City doesn't work. We've witnessed it, we've felt it, we've been through it. This is made clearer after the COVID crisis, as we've seen longstanding venues shutter for good, lots of them, especially all the ones that offered subsidized rentals. There is strength in numbers, is what we, we believe. And Marien Ostrom Elements is keenly positioned as a charitable organization to fill a community art space with vibrant working artists. And maybe Steve could talk a little bit about the Comart space, and we'll jump back in.
Sure, thank you, guys. So the Comart space is, is, you can see on the schedule, is about 1,500 square feet. And it would be ancillary performance space, affordable performance space. That would be available to local artists and other New York City artists. You know, we're targeting between $15 and $25 per hour, which we've been told, based on our research, is an, is an affordable, affordable charge per hour. And so we're excited about that. We've created a, a not-for-profit to, that would basically own and operate and manage that space. And, and we would work with Marien Ostrom Elements as well, as far as programming it and, and booking space. We think we would work with a, a key card access security system. And we would have internet-based booking systems managed by Comart. And the users would basically be required to maintain and clean the affordable spaces just so that we could keep the rates very low. However, the not-for-profit would schedule, you know, deeper cleanings for the spaces on a, on a monthly basis at least. We'd have, if you, if you look at the, the floor plan, you could see there's a common restroom that would be available for, for this arts node. And, and that was, again, to keep costs down so that we could provide affordable space for the, for the tenants as well and for the users. If you look at the rest of the plan, you'll see there's smaller 300, 200, 500 square foot available spaces. Those are meant to be rented on a short-term basis. One month, six months to a year to local artists, could be visual artists, could be performance artists. But again, keeping within the arts theme and the arts node, these spaces would be rented to, to users that need creative spaces. They could share them, they could, they can have them for themselves. And, and we think it'd be great for the community. And it's also a way to kind of subsidize the, the Comart space and the Marien Ostrom deeply affordable space. We are working and talking with Urban Vegan Kitchen, which is to, to, to have a, a vegan cafe on this level as well. Urban Vegan Kitchen is, is a great establishment. They have a location in Manhattan already. And they are tied into the performing arts, you know, substantially. And so we thought it would be a great mix to have a cafe area down here, a mural for the arts, and then have these affordable performance spaces and smaller studios slash short-term rental spaces for other artists. I'll leave it there.
Great.
Jordan?
Thanks. Kevin, Nico, you all, you all good for me to?
Yeah, just what, we just wanted, had one little last thing we wanted to say. And that, as, as Steve said, that we will work very closely with the Comart space to fill the space with artists looking for longer-term subsidized rentals. We've been in business for 20 years, and it's connected us with many artists operating at, at every level. Some examples of things that we might be able to do in that space, we'll keep it.
Yes, so beside dance classes, acting class, also we're thinking to use some of the office space and maybe possibly having a collaborative of visual artists. They've been expressing interest in possibly renting. And that will also help us maintain the space for the subsidized rental for the Comart and Marien Ostrom Elements rehearsal spaces. Stephen and the entire team have been great with us, have been collaborating. And we've been working very well in, really, they really listen to our suggestions and other people that we encounter. And so we really feel that this is a model that would really serve the, the neighborhood and, and the whole community, not only us or the, the arts community.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks.
Okay. So we've been having conversations with the community on this project for, through, over three years. Been to the community board three or four times now. We've met with the councilman's office. We've been talking with local nonprofits. We've spoken to the Queens Economic Development Corporation, to NHS of Queens. Marien Ostrom's been, been super in helping connect us with other arts nonprofits. Steve has worked to try to engage with some very, I think, desirable potential tenants, including Emerald Isle Immigration Services. And we've taken to heart, I think, the request that this neighborhood deserves quality architecture, but something that also fits in with the community. And I, I hope you feel that the design that we have at this point meets that. I mentioned before, we, we, we changed from our original plan on affordability to bring rents permanently lower. We're close to finalizing an agreement with 32BJ so that the service workers who are in the building and represent the permanent jobs associated with this building of good wages and benefits. And, and we're excited about that because frankly, the 32BJ workers are, are best in the business and, you know, who, who you want involved with your building. Another request that was made that we're, that we're excited about, and I thank the community board for, for helping make the connection, is to NYC Mesh, who's a nonprofit that works to make the internet free for everyone. And we're, we're very happy to announce that we have committed to them that we will make a contribution to have one of their nodes on top of our building. And through that, Wi-Fi will be made free to a, to a nice radius around our building. We were asked to make commitments about local hiring. We're happy to make those commitments. And, and you have our, our pledge to work with community board and the councilmen to, you know, whether, whether it's a job fair or otherwise. And also when we go through the, the lease-up process, we work with local organizations to make sure that, again, people from the community know that this is their chance to, to apply for affordable units. All right. So a little bit part of the, the difficult part of the conversation here. But we do want to be honest about the development scenarios. So as was described earlier, rezoning the site permits an additional four stories for a total of 13 stories. Overall, you know, we, we recognize that, that that's a large, a much larger building. But we think that that addition is really a benefit. If we don't get the zoning approval, and unlike many other rezoning requests that, that you might see around the city, there is a viable alternative here. And the likely nine-story building have a mix of commercial and, and community facility uses. But as Steve mentioned, the objective is to get the best rent city can for that smaller building. It's approximately 123 units that will be mostly market rate. And, you know, I, I, I just think that we have a better alternative without asking for so much more in terms of size under, under the rezoned massing. So with these side-by-side, you can see, you know, the top portion and a little bit more bulk that is representative of, of the 54 affordable units. Those would be spread out, of course, throughout the building. We hope that between those affordable units and everything else that we've described, that the community finds that to be the more desirable alternative. We just want to be honest, you know, that, that the site is getting developed. But we hope that with your support and ultimately with the council's support, that the site can be rezoned and that all the benefits that we've described tonight can come to fruition. So we will stop there and Lisa, turn it back over to you.
Thanks, Jordan. I'm gonna turn this over now to public testimony. The first person that's listed, that's signed up is Steve Hitt. I'm gonna... Debbie, can you unmute?
Okay, I'm unmuted.
No, unmute Stephen Hitt.
I'm unmuted.
Okay, great. All right, fantastic. Stephen, you have two minutes for testimony and/or question.
Cool. Thank you very much for letting me speak tonight. My name is Stephen Hitt. I'm the artistic producing director of LaGuardia Performing Arts Center and is part of LaGuardia Community College in Long Island City. About eight years ago, council member Jimmy Van Bremer connected Marien Ostrom Elements with me at the Performing Arts Center. We work as a performing arts center to develop new work with emerging artists in theater, dance, and music. I was doing really well in getting the theater part going for it. I wanted to develop the dance more because I come out of the dance world as a professional dancer for many, many years. But I've been now at LaGuardia for 15, going on 16 years. When Marien Ostrom Elements came in to me, they truly were a godsend for helping me develop an emerging choreographers platform. And it's, over the eight years, it's been a great partnership for us to be able to work well together. There are a lot of young emerging artists moving into Queens at this point right now, and they need a home. And over this past year, it's been very, very difficult for us to have any kind of work growing. And we have lost several of our, our performing arts spaces and our studio spaces. So providing an opportunity for Marien Ostrom Elements to have affordable space for young performers is a great gift to Queens. And I must say also, I am a resident of Queens and have been for many, many years, as well as working in the area. So my request tonight is that you approve this project and allow Marien Ostrom Elements to develop a, a new space in this area in Queens.
Thank you, Stephen. The next person signed up is Nancy Cleaver.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Nancy, how are you?
I'm okay. It's so great to see you all.
I know.
I miss you. Yes, I'm Nancy Cleaver. I'm a CB2 resident and former CB2 board member. Been resident for 15 years. And I'm currently executive director of an organization called Dancing Classrooms, which cultivates essential life skills and defiant joy through the art of social dance. We serve about 16,000 kids in about 150 schools, predominantly schools in Queens, as well as on the weekends. And I've been leading arts organizations of various sizes for about 25 years and have created a number of kooky collaborations here in Woodside and Sunnyside. And one of those collaborations in 2014 was working with a group of local arts businesses, which included Nico and Kevin, to find a dedicated art space in the, in the neighborhood. We had commissioned a community needs assessment in Sunnyside and Woodside by Queens College Urban Studies Department, actually. I have it right here. It's not very thick, but overwhelmingly, the residency, the residents that we surveyed wanted to see such a community center here in the neighborhood. So I definitely see a use for it, a need for it. And I toured the space with Steve a few years ago. Hi, Steve. And, and I was amazed, even before this proposal, it's a great location. It's a great space, even as it is. For a variety of reasons, that project didn't move forward, but the remains, the project still remains a necessary for local artists, of which I know dozens and dozens that want to work where they live. So I think Nico and Kevin, what you do with Marien Ostrom and emerging choreographers is incredible. Your partnership with LaGuardia is incredible. I think we want to help train new artists and choreographers, and we want them to create work here. We want the businesses in our neighborhood to also benefit from that. So as this project moves forward, I would love, as the, the leader of Dancing Classrooms, which had to abandon its space in Manhattan because the rents were too damn high in 2017, and we've been working remotely ever since. I would love to stay involved in this project, maybe even get involved in it down the road.
Nancy, could you wrap up?
Yes. So love this. It's exactly what we need. It makes sense. I hope the board will vote to approve it.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you all.
Hope to see you again. Andy Gilbert? Is Andy with us? I don't see Andy. The next person is Daniela Dina.
Hello, everyone. Hi, I'm Daniela Dina. And I'm, I've been a resident of Woodside for like 20 years. And I'm a visual artist. So I've been, as I said, I've been working either as decorative painter and painting my own project, projects, and as a graphic designer and illustrator. And as a graphic designer illustrator, I've been working for, I've been called by Marien Ostrom Elements many times to work on their project, either the theater project, the programs for the theater project, and mostly in the last years as illustrator for the Young Wave programs they, they had in Queens at PS11, PS152. And I learned about this rezoning and this space that could be available with the rezoning lately, and I think is a great idea. I have been, Marien Ostrom Elements, first of all, is a company that is, you know, in a profit, that is involved with their, with, with a community and with the neighborhood. And I think their idea of managing this space is, is great and is something that really, it's needed in Woodside. As a visual artist, I always had difficulties finding spaces to paint. Sometimes, most of the time, I don't need like big spaces to paint because I can do takes at home. But sometimes I need larger spaces to do larger painting, and it's impossible to find it, you know, close by. And also like in an affordable, you know, like, a price. So I'm, you know, I really hope, I know the area because I live close by. And I, this project looks great, the building looks great, the possibility of this building are great. So I really hope that it's going to be voted by the board and it will be available for costume artists and visual artists.
Daniela, if you would wrap up, please.
And so that's it. You know, like, I really hope this, this thing, this building is going to be built and soon. So everybody, I think, will benefit from it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thomas Hagerty?
Okay, thank you. As a lifelong Woodcider, we would welcome with open arms a revitalization of this area of Woodside that we affectionately call Downtown Woodside. Woodside's also known as the geographic heart of New York City, as many people know on this call. The plan's proposed improvements of the area would also provide for additional housing adjacent to a major transit hub, the Long Island Railroad, the number seven line, and several bus routes that connect to points southwest and east in Queens. And on the commercial side, new storefronts would certainly be an attraction to a renter with this transit hub access, steady foot traffic, and additional residence. Further, a focus on the arts is also something that is sorely needed so as to quote unquote compete with the likes of Long Island City, Manhattan, and Brooklyn, and to provide formance for these forums for these artists to call home. The team that is proposing this project is one we know well here in Woodside. They work exclusively in Queens, as Steve mentioned. They have deep roots here themselves, like all of us, and they've been staunch supporters of the community, especially the parish of St. Sebastian's down, down the street on Roosevelt Avenue for quite some time now. That demonstrates their commitment to the neighborhood, Queens at large, and everyone in between. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. The next person signed up is Glenn English. Is Glenn, Debbie?
Hello, hi, good evening. How are you?
Hi, Glenn. Good, thanks.
Okay, so my name is Glenn English. I, I'm an acting teacher here in New York City. I've been teaching method acting for about fourteen years. I'm a theater professor. I worked for the City University of New York and a number of other organizations. I'm an independent producer. I ran the Musifier Theater Company for a number of years. I'm sort of in the same business as, as Marien Ostrom, so to speak. I'm, I'm really familiar with the Marien Ostrom Company. I know the artistic director and the executive producer, Kevin Nicola. I think they do fantastic work. Their emerging, emerging choreography series, their partnership with LaGuardia, their various theatrical productions, I think, are all really first rate. And I think they really, really deserve a first-rate home and a, and a space. I, I don't live in Woodside. I live in Sunnyside. My daughter takes piano lessons in Woodside, so I'm familiar with Woodside. I think this project looks fantastic. And one of the great things about Marien Ostrom Elements, I know firsthand, is that they provide amazing opportunities both for emerging choreographers and emerging artists and theater artists and dance artists. And I think it would be a really wonderful thing to have in the community. And I know that they would provide great opportunities for, for artistic people who are looking for rehearsal space to collaborate, to create at a reasonable, affordable price. So I urge you guys, when you're voting, to please to, to vote to approve. I think they'll do fantastic work. I know they've been doing fantastic work for years, and I know they'll continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. The next person is Shiana Barrera.
Yes, hi, good evening, respected community board number two members and Woodside residents. My name is Shianix Barrera. I am a flamenco dancer, teacher, and choreographer, and an alumni of the Emerging Choreographer Series two thousand and nineteen, of which I was nominated for a Bestie Award for my performance at LaGuardia Performing Arts Center in Queens, New York. I am here tonight in support of Marien Ostrom Elements, MNE, and their efforts to establish a performing arts hub within the new development and vision for sixty-two oh four Roosevelt Avenue. We are a group of thirty choreographers who had the privilege to work with MNE within the past eight years. As alumni of the Emerging Choreographer Series, a space grant, mentorship, and career development program produced in collaboration with LaGuardia Performing Arts Center, we were lucky to benefit from MNE's generosity, guidance, and continuous support. By establishing the ECS program, MNE not only became a nurturing and safe creative space, but also an avid advocate for inclusion and fairness. Within the eight series of the program, MNE has welcomed artists from several diverse backgrounds, highlighting many different forms of dance. Not many other similar programs or festivals make the efforts that MNE makes to produce an equitable performance space that includes modern, contemporary musical theater, tap flamenco, jazz, hip hop, dance theater, and any other creative fusion or form. We are, all share an essential learning experience during the program, but more importantly, we're guided to create a network of collaborators, mentors, consultants, and colleagues. After the Emerging Choreographer Series, many of us have continued to present work in other festivals and venues, and many of us are self-produce our own work with, with the skills we learned in the program. MNE understands that the creative process needs time and space. Due to skyrocketing real estate prices and a competitive environment, time and space have become rare and almost unattainable. We are currently, currently struggle with the economic uncertainties like any other New Yorker, and at the same time, we are frightened by the prospects of finding affordable venues to work on.
Could you wrap up? Thank you.
We are confident that the arts hub proposed by MNE will be a vibrant and resourceful opportunity, and we hope that you will vote in favor. Gracias, yo le.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Marissa Williams?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marissa Williams, and I'm a representative of Thirty-two B J S C I U. I'm here on behalf of the union tonight to express our proposed, to express our support for the proposed project of the Roosevelt redevelopment. Thirty-two B J is one of the largest property services union in the country, representing eighty-five thousand property service workers in New York City, many of who live in Woodside, Queens. Thirty-two B J supports responsible developers who invest in communities where they build. I'm happy to report that the developers, Woodside Sixty-three Management LLC and Marien Ostrom Elements are on their way towards making credible commitments to creating prevailing wage service jobs and affordable housing at this site. This commitment is an investment in the community by providing wages and benefits that give working families opportunity for upward mobility, security, and provide permanent affordable housing. We estimate that this development will lead to the creation of five new building service shops, as well as offer fifty-four new affordable housing units. We know that this development will continue to uphold the industry standard and provide opportunities for working families to thrive in Woodside. We need good-paying jobs that can lift our neighbors up, and we need access to housing that we can afford. We will keep the community updated on the good job commitments, which we are confident will be finalized in the coming weeks.
Thank you, Marissa.
Thank you.
The next person is Eric Steinberg.
Hello.
Hello.
Nice, good evening. I apologize. I'm having trouble with my video, but you all can hear me, right?
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
Okay, very good. My name is Eric Steinberg. I, I own a company called Baldwin, Remmon, and Sampson Corporation, and I'm one of senior tenants on Sixty-third Street. And we manage a partnership of military medals and decoration awards. And I'm a firm supporter of the project. I think it will definitely improve the quality of life and the people in the area, and create a terrific transit hub, which is definitely needed. And I want to say a couple of things about Steve, he's a terrific landlord because a lot of landlords have dealt with a very inflexible, and the pandemic had created a lot of uncertainty in the industry. And I was in the project of selling the business, and Steve has been very, very good to me and very understanding. And currently, I don't have a lease with him, so we're going month to month, and we're in constant communication. And I definitely support the project, and he's been, he's been trying to help me out with a lot of things. And I really do hope you guys go forward with this, and I'll support you any way I can. Okay?
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you very much.
Next person is David Tianga. I see David. David Tianga.
Hey, guys. Sorry, sorry, I'm here. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Hey, so I'm the owner and operator of Urban Vegan Kitchen, which Steve had mentioned earlier. We are a vegan restaurant in New York City. I grew up in Queens. I went to high school with Steve. My mom still lives in Queens. Steve told me about this project and asked me if I might be interested in bringing our brand, you know, to do a little café. And when he did, and he told me everything, I was very, very excited, especially being from Queens. I've always wanted to operate a business in Queens. We work very closely with the Queens Bridge community, actually, right now. Among other communities, we're not just a restaurant. We focus on education, helping people that might not have access to information on how to eat healthy. We provide that for them, and it would be great to do that in Queens. It's actually a dream of mine. I think Queens needs it. It's ready for it. And I think someone like Steve is a great person to bring this on. He's always been a stand-up guy, you know, straight shooter, and we want to do business with people like that. And I also have owned a theater company and dabbled in film and TV. So also to be part of that would be great in any small way. When I grew up in Queens, we didn't really have access to those things. So to be part of something that would bring that to the community would be something really, really special, I think. And like I said, I think Queens is ready for it. I think it'll bring something very positive and something maybe a little new. And from what I'm hearing today, you know, all the people involved seem amazing, and I'm super excited. And I hope that you guys are too, and I hope you, you guys pass this on. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. The next person is Jennifer Reyes Bueno.
Hi there.
Hi.
Can you see me?
Yep, we can see you.
All right there. So I was born and raised in Queens. My family resides down the seven line from this project in Sunnyside on Bliss Street. This community has been in need of revitalization for some time now. I really do believe that this project will foster a better quality of life for my family and for all others, as well as a stronger feeling of safety and security for the families in the neighborhood to explore the area a little bit more. I know over the years, you know, I've been a little timid at times to go out later at night because it is a little bit of feeling of an unsafe environment at times by the tracks. I am a registered nurse, and after working on the front lines through this pandemic, I know now more than ever that what this community needs is hope, and my children need a place to express themselves. Our community needs a place to express themselves. And through creativity and the arts, and from what I've heard through this presentation, I think it will bring a feeling of hope to the community, that there's some, you know, sun and bright light at the end of this dark tunnel that we're going through right now. So I really do support this project, and I hope you will too.
Thank you, Jennifer. Rob McKenna? Rob McKenna? There's a Robert.
Yeah, I see that Robert. I don't know if that's him.
I'm gonna move on. We'll come back to Rob. Chunheo Peter Chu?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
Hi, how you doing, ma'am?
Very good. Thank you for coming.
Okay, so I am also one of Steve Leicher's tenants at Sixty-third Street. My company is AMG Contracting. AMG stands for Architectural Metal and Glasswork. We started a lease with Steve back in two thousand, April two thousand and seventeen. And we partnered up with another same trade tenant. But due to some internal dispute, we had troubles with the partner, and I fell back on rent about, I think, half a year, two year worth of rent. And Steve was very understanding. He helped us restructure the lease separate from the partners that are actually still there now. And he gave us time and to help me get back on my feet. So right now is what, twenty twenty-one? I left that space at two thousand and nineteen. So up to today, I'm still paying back the rent. And because of this flexibility, I was able to stay open and back to profitability. And with the pandemic and everything, he was very understanding. Most of the land where they would just, you know, we sign personal guarantees. So most landlord would just do that with a lawyer, and I would have no choice about bankruptcy. So here, I can attest the fact that owner wants, even though we were just tenants, but he, he, he's a great age gentleman, wants a tenants to succeed. And he showed flexibility and sacrifice, you know, to help tenants, only at least me. I, I'm pretty sure he's a stand-up guy to all his tenants as well. And I'm still a business part of this flexibility. And I, I've also spoken with Steve, if this job, if this building goes up, that he would use me to do the architectural metal and glass, the glazing part, windows, storefront part of the work. This project, I feel, is going to bring, you know, retail office and construction jobs. And not only has Steve helped us restructure lease, but I appreciate the construction job. And this will also increase, include, increase the foot traffic that this will bring to the side of the overpass.
Thank you, Peter.
You're welcome.
Thanks very much. The next person is Gregory Musial.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Awesome, thank you. I'd like to thank the community board for allowing people from the neighborhood platform to speak. My family, consisting of my wife and my two young boys, we live on Sixty-first between Woodside and Forty-third, which is just a couple of blocks away from the proposed site. I am a, I'm not in the arts, unlike most people here tonight, but I'm a site safety inspector for Con Edison, and my wife is a nurse. Like I said, we live a couple of blocks away. Currently, I was born and raised in Woodside. On a positive note, I've seen the renderings here tonight online, which is when I first got exposed to the project. I think a building like this would really anchor the neighborhood, create a more welcoming vibe for retailers and stores, not to mention that better stores and retailers, unlike what's there now, which is very much an eyesore. These new business owners, a couple of which have spoken tonight, such as a gentleman that owns the vegan, the vegan restaurant. People like him would feel comfortable investing in the neighborhood and investing in our community with Mr. Leicher's project. On a negative note, I do want to bring up, my wife shops at the grocery, at the supermarket across the street for the family's groceries, the Fresh and Safe. Couple nights over the past few years, she's been walking home. And the current commercial retailers and stores that are there now, I mean, at night, it's not well lit. It doesn't necessarily feel safe. My wife doesn't feel safe if she's walking home by herself with the groceries. Not to mention, there's a barber shop there now, and people, I don't know what you want to call them, let's just say undesirables, hang out there late at night, and there's been an instance or two where someone has said something to my wife when she's walking home. So I urge the community, please, you know, support the proposed development, and that's all. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Gregory. The next person is Gustavo. I don't have a last name.
Yeah, hi, hi, everyone.
Hi.
I've been living in the neighborhood for the last eight years, and I believe that this project will really help in build a better community. I also believe that it will help the local businesses and our families by creating new opportunities. And also believe that Roosevelt Avenue needs a new light inject to the neighborhood. I see all the neighborhoods being changing and moving forward with new developments. I work in the city, so see, seeing the city moving forward and look at my neighborhood that, you know, it has nothing new to it. I believe this project will really help going forward, and I really hope the, the board members vote for this project going forward.
Thank you, Gustavo. Thank you, Gustavo. The next person is Tracy Hagerty. Um, I see Tom Hagerty. I don't see Tracy. Why don't we move on? Uh, Mafusa Akta. I see Mafusa. Debbie, can you unmute? Are you able to unmute him?
Yeah, unmute, please.
Mafusa, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, okay, fantastic.
Uh, did you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you and
I hear you.
Good, good. You have, uh, two minutes to speak.
Yeah, sure, no problem. How's everything? Hi, everyone, to you. Actually, I have a business over there with Steve, which is located, uh, Roosevelt Avenue. And we start two thousand seventeen. And we, we, uh, is that restaurant? And he's a really, he had a good relationship with my brother. And, um, he helped us from the beginning to, hmm, he gave us backup for the buildup to our business. And last year we lost my brother and he's still, he's, uh, uh, helping with my rent for my everything. And actually, actually, he tried to give me a backup with the rent and with the build up my business. Hello, did you guys hear me?
Yes, yes. Yes, keep going.
Go on, you know, I'm getting backup from Steve, eh, every single thing, right? He never pressured me, you know, it's long time, I'm really, uh, getting disturbed for my family, you know, my brother, we lost for COVID nineteen. And he's still, we are trying to build up that business and he tried to give me a, a backup with the rent, everything, and he, uh, he helped me a lot. So I'd like to actually, you know, stay with him and stay with that business.
Thank you, Mafusa.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry about your brother.
No problem. I don't know what happened. Thanks to Steve too, again, to everyone, actually, he has really helped me a lot. He has really helped me a lot. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Uh, Nicholas O.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Um, uh, oh. Um, yeah, um, sorry, sorry. Um, I, so I, I, I am for this project. Um, you know, I, I am an immigrant. Um, I, I moved here ten years ago and, um, you know, I, I'm a tenant. I don't really have any family here. And, um, basically, you know, my experience with housing in New York City has been, you know, very bad. Um, you know, like, like nothing is affordable, like you, you try to get, you know, an apartment and like you basically have to take the first one that, like, you can kind of, uh, get in your price range because if you don't, like, you just lose it and you don't really have any, any re- you know, any other choices. So, you know, we really need more housing. We need more affordable housing. And I think this is gonna be great. I mean, it's, it's gonna revitalize the na- the, the area. It's going to create jobs, it's gonna have housing and, you know, um, I, I have have family members who used to live in New York City, you know, uh, a cousin of mine who's basically like sister to me, we grew up together. She moved here fifteen years ago and she had to leave the city because, um, she couldn't afford the rent. She lived with seven other people. You know, in, um, in a two-bedroom, uh, at that point, and she was a waitress, uh, receptionist. And, um, you know, because of the high rents and, you know, every dollar she made was just for rent and she just left and now I don't have any family in the city. Um, and I just feel like there must be a lot of other people, you know, um, who have similar experiences, who, you know, um, yeah, and just, you know, sounds, it just sounds great, forty-eight units of affordable. Another one seventy for like middle-class families. And I feel like this is really what we need, you know, especially, this has been a terrible year for a lot of people. Um, and I feel like this is a good kind of like look, if things are looking up, right? And this is kind of a sign of that. Um, anyway, that's, that's my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Um, I understand, um, Stephen has spoken. Um, Gabriel Com- Compost?
Yeah, uh, good afternoon, everybody. So I'm actually a resident of Woodside. Uh, I have no particular ties to this development project whatsoever, uh, other than living in a neighborhood. Um, you know, it sounds like a great idea when it comes to the retail space and providing more business in the neighborhood, especially it's, uh, better than the quality that's currently existing. And I'm usually a fan when it comes to the arts, but I do take into account, you know, we're in the middle of pandemic and how much is this space actually gonna provide or contribute to, you know, the growth of the com- the, the community? Um, I know that there's, you know, other theaters like United Palace, Theatro, Soi, Soi and Broadway in general, they're still trying to recover, so I just keep that in mind. Again, it's more of a note than a, than a, uh, critique. Um, but when it comes down to the development, the only thing I'm opposed to really is just practicality of it. We're talking about a location that is in a transit hub that's right underneath the cemetery, which by the way, was having issues of debris falling from underneath it previously. So there's a question of, well, how is this gonna impact during its construction and development, the infrastructure, uh, infrastructure of the seven line? Um, and then also zoning laws usually exist because we're worried about the city's infrastructure. So when you start putting in a toward two hundred and fourteen unit, thirteen-story building, you know, something as simple as plumbing might be an issue because more buildings, more units, more plumbing, more people are using water. So what if there's a black flow in the city? And, and that's not some far-fetched idea I came up with. That's actually what happened in Harlem, for example, when buildings were being created, there is backflows in the city's sewer line because it wasn't designed to support, uh, such a large-sized, uh, building. So my concern again is just comes, comes out to practicality. I love the idea of the retail space, I love the idea of the art space. Um, and I think it's a great endeavor and I do understand some, some, some questions about the sketchiness of the neighborhood and how it would help improve it. But I just, you know, I'm worried about the practicality, uh, and, and for that reason, I just wanna highlight that and bring that into question. Um, but I'm not taking a particular stance outside of that. Uh, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Gabriel, very much. Uh, next person is James. I don't have a last name. Uh, from Donovan's? I don't see James. Okay, uh, Tom Hagerty, you already spoke, right? You signed up twice, probably, yes. Uh, Melissa Hurtado.
Lisa, Mary Ann will do time for a short time.
I don't see Meli- what? Oh, she'll do time? Okay. I just, yeah, we, yeah, okay, that's fine. Um, Jeremy Welsh Loveman.
Great, thank you. So hello, I'm a Long Island City resident and I want to comment in strong support of this rezoning, I think would provide significant uh, housing affordability and environmental benefits. Uh, these lots are right next to a subway station, allowing more housing here. Would allow more people to use mass transit, which would help fight climate change and reduce air pollution. Adding more housing here, uh, would directly create affordable housing, uh, through the rent-restricted units, and it would indirectly create more affordable housing as the new supply would reduce demand and competition, uh, for existing apartments in the area. These sixty percent of AMI units, uh, would have rents at, uh, twelve oh four for a one-bedroom and, uh, one thousand four thirty-seven for a two-bedroom, both discounts to the median rent in the area of, uh, fifteen hundred and thirty-six. These regulated units would also be new and rent-stabilized, meaning beyond just providing affordability benefits, they would allow tenants to have higher-quality housing where they wouldn't have to worry about maintenance or pest issues. Now, the city's stock of rent-stabilized housing gets older every year. It's vital for the city to expand it through projects such as this. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, the last speaker that we have signed up is Hugo Casagno. I see Hugo. Uh, Mary Ann, can you unmute Hugo?
Okay, let me try.
Well, hello.
Yeah, hi, hi Hugo.
Well, uh, when I was here with Casagno, like many other people here today, I am also a fellow Woodcider. Uh, I would just like to ask if you guys could send the information to my email, uh, jvcestablishment@gmail.com. Uh, I'll put it in the chat if needed. That's really it.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Uh, Melissa Hurtado was muted and so she is here. Uh, Mary Ann, can you unmute her?
Okay, let me try.
I don't see her listed. Melissa, um, oh, it's JVC Establishment. I don't see that either.
I don't see her.
Uh, JVC. Is that Hugo? Hugo?
I should just spoke. He was with JVC.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, Amy Hurtado, are you on an iPhone?
I'm sorry, I'm actually on my computer, but my sister-in-law is on her iPhone, so I think she wants to speak. So if you unmute the iPhone one, I think that's probably her. I see one called iPhone and it doesn't have anyone else.
Okay, will you, um, Mary Ann, could you unmute the iPhone?
Yes. Oh, it's not letting me, Lisa. It's not letting me unmute.
Um, okay.
People probably have to unmute herself. There's a code. I forgot what it is.
I don't know what that is. Who was that just speaking?
Maury.
Maury.
No, before Maury, I'm sorry.
I can't unmute her either. This is Debbie.
No, I understand you can't unmute this person, but somebody was speaking for her sister-in-law.
Oh, yeah, uh, my name is Amy Hurtado. I'm her sister-in-law.
Amy, um, do you, can you speak for your sister-in-law?
Um, give me a, um, so, sorry, my baby, this is the background. Um, yeah, I, I think, we live on sixty-fourth street and you know, I, I think that the retail space and the community space down on the ground level could be a really good thing for the community, but I am concerned that the thirteen-story building just is too large for the area. Um, the subway, I mean, obviously pandemic isn't super overcrowded at the moment. Um, but, no. Melissa, if you dial pound six, I think you can unmute yourself. But, uh, we just think it, it would be a lot more traffic for the area than it can handle and then to have that many parking spots, there's gonna be more car traffic. One sixty-third street, there's already extremely backed up in my opinion, as is, um, so that and then the other issue that I have is with bringing in this building, I know there's supposed to be affordable units, but we're gonna drive up the rent prices in the area. And I don't know if that's fair to the people who have been here for so many years. Um, I think we're gonna start to price them out of the area and I think that's a really big concern. Um, so those are some of my feelings. Uh, I tried to tell my sister-in-law to unmute, but I don't think she's able to do it.
It's star six, A- Amy, it's star six, not pound six.
Oh. I think she can hear you, so. It must not be working.
Will, will come back.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi. Sorry, I'm Melissa, hi.
Hi, Melissa. Sorry for the, um, iPhone problem. Um, you have two minutes to speak.
All right, thank you. I, so I do agree with Gabriel and I agree with my sister-in-law, Amy as well. I think the retail space is a nice idea to have. My biggest concern definitely is for rent as well. So in terms of units, there are two hundred and fourteen that are being built with only sixty-four being affordable. That means that a hundred and forty-nine are not. So that can also rent, raise the rent around the area and the neighborhood as well in terms of apartments. The seventh string pre-pandemic, you couldn't sit on the seven line on Woodside, and if you did, you were squished in. So any other station past that point, Sunnyside and further, would also be a nightmare to get on to. Traffic is already very hard as well on Roosevelt because it's such a hub with everything as well in terms of that infrastructure. And on top of that, parking, there are garages in the neighborhood, but there's even a five-year waitlist for that as well. So I'm glad that there is parking in this space, but does not mean that's gonna be available for everyone, which will also increase the amount of spaces being used on the street. So I like the idea of a retail space. I think it's just too big of a building for the neighborhood right now, and I don't agree with having so many apartment buildings in that space. That was my piece.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. Um, have a good night. There are a couple of people with their hands up who, I'm assuming, weren't able to sign up. Um, Edward McWilliams. Are you here to testify?
Uh, yes, I am, Lisa. Thank you very much. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yes. Uh, my name's Ed McWilliams. I'm the executive director with the New York City District Councilor Carpenters. Um, some of my members, some of our members who live in the area, uh, asked me to, uh, sit in on this meeting. One of, several of them on this phone call, Vinnie McGuire. Um, one, one of our, it, it's, it's a nice-looking building and, um, I don't wanna comment on the, on the size and scale of it. I think that should be the people who live in the community. But what concerns us most is that the develop- if the developer is gonna have a responsible contractor policy ultimately when they build this building, I think it's very important for Community Board Two to ask those questions. And what are the labor standards going to be, uh, when they're awarding this job to certain co- contractors? What we, what we don't like to see, and, uh, a lot of our members who live in the area, uh, they don't wanna see another construction sweatshop. They don't wanna see another, uh, construction site that, uh, there's a lot of wage theft, there's injuries, there's, uh, all kinds of, uh, you know, problematic contractors awarded these jobs. And we see this too of- too often in Queens on these residential projects, uh, even when they include the affordable housing, which we understand is very, very important, um, the affordable housing, but it shouldn't be at, at the expense of the workforce who lives and works i- i- in the area. Um, so we would just implore, uh, Community Board Two to seek out the developer's intentions as far as labor. Uh, ultimately, whatever they ultimately build on this site. And, um, we'll, we'll be here for you to, uh, you know, for feedback. We'll attend more meetings. We'll make sure we have more of our members in the area attending these community board meetings. We think it's just as important as what's going to get built, uh, is how.
Thank you, Edward. Um, and Vincent, um, it, um, can Vincent, can you star six to unmute yourself? Vincent, on your iPhone, if you punch in star six, you can unmute yourself to speak. I'm gonna move on. We can come back to you, Vincent, if you can figure out how to unmute. Hi.
All right.
Great. Uh, you have two minutes, Vincent.
Yes. Um, just to piggyback what Eddie was saying, I'm a New York City District Council Carpenter myself. I lived in the neighborhood for twenty-four years. And, uh, I would like to see develop, uh, you know, union jobs. I'm a union carpenter. I make a good wage. I own, I own a house. And I'd like to see other people in the neighborhood get that opportunity through the union to get union jobs, which developer will provide. So I would just like to make sure that the job would be hopefully done, union to pay union wages. So people have a great, uh, wage for their family and a, and a good future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Vincent.
All right, bye.
I, I don't, at this point in time, I have nobody else who's signed up to testify. Um, Serena, I see your hand up.
Yes, I have a quick question.
Wait, wait, before, Serena, before you ask the question, I just want Before, Serena, before you ask the question, I just want to close the public testimony now. That portion of the public comment is closed. And we're gonna move now to questions, question and answer from board members. So I'll turn it over to you, Serena.
Okay, great, great.
But you're echoing.
Okay, there, that's better. I just want to wrap my head around this. I mean, obviously, I think, you know, development is, is a good thing. I've lived and worked in the area for over 20 years. I just want to wrap my head around how it's gonna be and look like once it's, it's developed, it's, once it's standing there. I didn't see in the proposal what the square footage is going to be for a community space and for residential. Like what is it in, in the proposal and what is it in the ASR right?
Yeah, Jordan, do you want to answer that question?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll let Shiva answer. She's my square foot specialist. But the, the, the map with the numbers is up now.
Sure. Well, as you can see, the, then the comparison between the numbers, the amount of square footage that we can propose in terms of residential is, is more than what we have at the ASR right. Then as Jordan mentioned, we can go four-story higher and or, you know, more lot coverage and like a larger building would accommodate for that. In terms of community facility space, we are proposing about 7,500 square foot of community facility for this development. And again, in terms of retail, well, specifically art space and, and art usage is not permitted onto, under the ASR right. So that's one of the main reasons that, you know, this, this rezone is going to help the, the community to have more participation and more, you know, we're giving back to the community. Just want to put something out there. We are here to, to listen to you. This is not a build project. We are here, this is just a schematic design. That's why we're here to, to hear you out and incorporate your comments into the, to the development. So as, as everyone else from my team mentioned, the ASR right is, is already, you know, a nine-story building. And we all agree that with this rezone, what we're going to bring back is more for the benefit of the community. So if you go back, Jordan, to that comparison page, maybe you can see the comparison between the number of proposed units. Instead of 213 units that we're proposing, it's going to be 123 dueling units. And they're going to be, you know, there's no requirements to provide affordable housing here. They can be all market rate. So we thought locating this building, you know, rezoning this development area for mandatory inclusion in housing is going to give more units back as permanently affordable unit to the community as well.
If I'm understanding correctly, the, the community space is going to be a lot less. Much smaller.
Well, the main reason is that the way that we are designing, and again, this is not, you know, finalized. We're still figuring it out. This is just a schematic layout. But technically, the amount of square footage that we are proposing for the community facility is in the lower levels. So that's why on the zoning numbers, you, you don't see them on this list. But the amount of space that you're proposing, it, it doesn't go anywhere. It's still more than 7,500 square feet of art space that you're putting. And because of the slope that you have, you know, there's like a slope street on 63rd. So it's like a middle space. It's like half above ground, half underground. And that's where we're putting the, the art space. So because it's technically all below grade, we cannot account it for the square footage that you're permitted for the zoning, but it's there. We're, we're going to build it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Roz, Genesis? Roz?
Yes, good evening. I have a couple of questions. Question number one has to do with the parking. And you say that accessory parking, I'm not quite sure what the word accessory means. But there's a required number mandated. And I'm curious, in the mandate, does it say the parking has to be for cars? Is it possible that a substantial portion of it or significant portion could be for bikes and other micro mobility devices? Such as, I was very delighted to hear you emphasizing the importance of non-car mobility in this neighborhood. And of course, we all know about the congestion. So that was, that's question number one. Question number two has to do with accessibility. And I'm absolutely certain that your building will be completely accessible to people with mobility limitations and so on. But the subway right next to it is only marginally accessible. It has one, as far as I know, one small elevator that is, it may have more than one, but there is a small space in, within the elevator. It's always crowded and it is not what I would call meaningful accessibility. Is there any way that you could discuss with the city and Long Island Railroad about things that you could do to make those stations more accessible and help address that need? It doesn't seem to make sense to me that you should have an accessible building without having accessible transit.
Who's, Jordan, who's going to take those questions?
So let me, let me just start on accessibility. Yes, of course. Will be meet all code with respect to accessibility. As far as the subway goes, I will, I, I will put it on my list of things to find out where. I know that there's been a major effort around the city to expand accessibility. I know on the, it's more challenging on the elevated lines. So I will, I will check into where they are at. I wanted to just make one other note with respect to accessibility before turning it over to Lisa and Shiva about the parking spots and the bike parking in the building, which is that right, if you see my, my cursor here, the residential entrance to the building is on 63rd Street here, very close to the, to the LIR platform. And I, I believe someone can smack me if I'm wrong. I believe that that is an accessible entrance from 63rd. So you're going to have, you know, an extremely short distance from the residential entrance to our building. If you, if LIR is your means of transportation right on to the.
If you're, if you're leaving, if you're leaving town and going out east.
Isn't that side of the platform into the city? No?
No. Yes, it is.
I thought this, I thought this side is into the city, but I could be wrong.
That's track one, which is into the city. Tracks one and three go into the city. So the one you're referring to, because it's right at the end of our street here, that's track one, and that goes into the city. So there's a, there's a direct ramp right onto track one.
Okay. So Lisa and Shiva, could you respond on the?
So in terms of bike storage, Jordan, can you please go to that layout for the community facility space? We're proposing 106 residential bike stor-
Um, she got cut off.
I'm sorry. I don't know how I was muted again. I, I thought I'm muted. I apologize. I was saying that the, the space that we're dedicating for bike storage, this is only for residential bike storages. The, you know, it's like about 106 parking spaces for, for the residents. So we do have that incorporated into our design. And there's going to be the total of nine other spaces for community facility and commercial in total. That is going to be dedicated in, in, in its own, you know, in the own uses. So I don't know if that answered your question, but we are considering in total 115 bike storage units for this development.
And then with respect to parking, Lisa, I.
Yeah, that, to answer the question about accessory parking, it does refer to vehicles. So there is a zoning requirement for parking spaces that, that are required in connection with uses. So zoning requires a certain number of vehicle parking spaces for residential, commercial and community facility uses in the building. And separately, it requires a certain number of bicycle parking spaces.
Thank you. Does somebody have a radio on in the back there? Okay, I, I think that answers, Roz, that answers your question.
Yeah, more or less. I mean, I think part of what I was asking was, is there a way to to cut back on car parking? It's not just for bike parking, but to reduce the car parking. But if the, if the code specifies that it has to be for motorized vehicles, then we have to look into changing that code sometime, but that's a separate issue.
Thank you, Roz. Christine Hunter.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi. Well, it was, it was gratifying to hear the, the amount of community support for the arts functions that are going to be that are, that are being proposed here and also the community's you know, desire or the, the speaker, the people that came tonight, their desire to see some revitalization in this part of Woodside. I, I do want to, to ask. I, I had requi, I do, I do have some concerns about the size of the building and the shadows that it will cast. And I did, we did, the land use committee did ask that the graphics of the shadow study that were included in the environmental study be presented tonight, which, which they're not. I don't know if you can bring them up. I think basically, you know, elevated subways have tended throughout the city to have a very blighting effect on the retail and the neighborhoods around them, not least because they create a very dark atmosphere on the street. And one of the effects of this building is going to be to, of, of the increased height of this building. And, and not just the increased height, but the, but the greater proximity of the 13 stories to both Roosevelt Avenue and to 63rd Street is going to make both those streets much darker for a lot of the time, which, which doesn't help the retail. I walk a lot in Woodside. I pick up my grandson from daycare on 58th Street. And it, it is, it is depressing and, and a blight on the neighborhood to, to have this structure looming over you. And you sort of, you know, the sunshine that does come through makes a big difference. This building is going to substantially reduce the sunshine in Woodside. And especially along Roosevelt Avenue to the north and to the east and the west as, as the sun moves around. So I'm not sure that it makes the most sense from an urban design point of view to increase the height in this location to the extent that's being proposed. I don't think that these are the illustrations.
Yeah, the, these are, so these are different from the EAS because we wanted to be able to compare. And, and I'll ask Shiva or Lisa to weigh in. We wanted to be able to compare, again, just so we're having this, you know, honest conversation, what the ASR right building, the shadows that it would cast and where as compared to the rezone proposal. And I apologize for the red marks on the screen. I don't know how they got there and I'm nervous to try to get rid of them.
That's okay. So you're saying that the brown is the nine-story building and the gray is the 13-story building?
That's correct.
Okay. But I think what's, what's not show, so these are specific moments in time, but you're not showing the sweep of the sun as it would affect the entire, you know, from, from, as it would affect all parts of the street from dawn to dusk, basically. You're just capturing a single moment. So I think it's a little bit misleading.
Christine, thank you so much for your concern. I totally understand the concern for the shadow of this development. Just to, just to give you a little bit more information about why we chose these days, it's because these are the, the most dramatic, like casting shadows throughout the year. So we chose December and March for the longer shadows during the, the winter when the angle of the sun is lower. And then in May and June, when we have like the shortest, you know, length of the shadow for the summer. So just, I mean, as you can see in the graphic, it, it shows that the nine-story building comparison between the nine-story building and the 13-story building for the rezone, it's about like 20, 30% difference for casting shadow in the worst possible, you know.
But I, I'm sorry, you, you're not showing anything at noon in any of these when the sun would in effect be, or, or later in the afternoon, or any of the middle times of the day when the sun would be casting shadows to the north on Roosevelt Avenue. These are extremely.
The, the longest shadow are, are in the afternoon. You correct me if I'm wrong. But around the noon, you have the shortest shadow.
But it is casting north on Roosevelt Avenue and you're not showing that. I mean, I'm sorry, I don't want to, I don't want to argue about this, but there were diagrams in the EAS that showed much more clearly what the impact was going to be on, on the surround, you know, total on the surrounding blocks. In any case, I think that, you know, designing along the elevated, the few elevated lines that remain in the city for increased development really requires, you know, should, should require more careful consideration of the implications of greater height. And I'm concerned that that's not happening here. And, and that this is essentially a spot rezoning without enough study.
This, you know, this is not the end of this dialogue. So it, you know, we can go back to land use and continue that conversation. But I, I would like to move along.
Yeah.
If you're okay with that. To Catherine Sable?
Yeah, Catherine Sable.
Sable, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Um, so yeah, I'm a lifelong Woodside resident, lived here all my life. So I'm very concerned about this project going on. Some, some really great things actually about it is affordable housing, which I wasn't sure was going to actually be affordable. So when I saw that, the numbers that you guys put up today, yeah, I was like, wow, I could maybe afford that, you know? So that made me happy. Also, the arts, the community spaces, I think, is a great idea. That would be so, so good for this community.
Catherine, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Okay.
That being said, aside from all these positives, there are some concerns from the neighborhood about the size of this building, about how many people that we're going to be inviting to move into this community and, which is already very overcrowded. I know there's a lot of concern about traffic already, about commuters on the trains and buses. Because even at the height of the pandemic, bus, buses were packed on Roosevelt Avenue. They were packed with, with commuters. So there's a lot that needs to be addressed as well as Edward McWilliams and Vincent, who also shared some concerns about how you guys are going to approach labor concerning this project. So I wanted some, if you could speak to those concerns about overcrowding in the neighborhood, about transportation issues and about labor.
Sure, I'll 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 give it a start. So on construction, well, first of all, regarding unions, so for the permanent jobs that are associated. We we have, as as you heard, we're we're close to an agreement and I'm sure we'll get there with thirty two BJ to have those union jobs for the for the permanent jobs that that stick around. On the construction side, we have not yet selected a general contractor. In my experience with buildings of this size and and what I what I expect is you wind up having a mix. You know, where some trades are union and some are not. You do see, you know, more so on on luxury buildings that can afford it. All union labor, I think my 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 guess is that this will be a mix. But again, we we haven't selected the general contractor yet. With with respect to density, I do want to remind folks again that you know, the the development is 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 coming. And and we hope that it can be with the rezone scenario and with the affordable housing and 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 other amenities. But you know, I think close close to this transportation hub that 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 is the place that density should go. I am not blind or deaf to the the realities of the seven line there. You know, happy to keep speaking with with you and and the council about ways to potentially alleviate that. I don't know if anyone else from the team has comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, Jordan, that the increased height and density are needed to support the affordable housing program and the community arts program. And also to note that there's a significant amount of non-residential floor area in this building and that is meant to that that will also encourage some reverse commuting from this location.
And I'll just I'll just echo what Jordan said with regards to the labor. You know, obviously, we have thirty two BJ involved, but we intend to have a a a, you know, we'll we'll put them out for bid and we intend to have a mix of most likely union and non-union, but but it is to be determined at the moment. And I'd just like to go back to one other question earlier. There was a question about the community facility space in the rezone project versus the as of right project. And I just wanted to note that the 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 rezone project will also have a second floor under the rezoned the under the new zoning envelope. That second floor is just expanded to not only be community facility, but can be standard commercial and office space as well in this district. So you're not losing community facility from one to the other. You're just increasing the the types of uses, but the second floor will have most likely community facility on it in the rezone property as well.
Yeah, I mean, we did talk about that at one time about having a medical facility or you're reaching out. You know, to a user of that type. Did you make any progress on that?
You know, we've been speaking to a lot of different users and so we have spoken to many different kind of local medical users who have businesses in the neighborhood who are looking to expand, get to a better quality space, et cetera. We've had multiple conversations with multiple hospitals looking for outpatient facilities and potentially including them here. So there have been discussions. They haven't gotten that far yet because, you know, we're still determining what's going to happen here. Number one and number two, to be frank, you know, most medical institutions were completely derailed by the pandemic and are focused on, you know, attending to patients, rightfully so, as opposed to their expansion plans. So we're we're noticing that some of these conversations are are moving moving forward.
Thank you. The next person, Steve.
I just had another.
No, 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 Catherine. Nick first, and then we have people who raise their hands. So Nick.
Thank you, Lisa. So I just want to start out by thanking the other Lisa, Jordan, Shiva, Nico and Kevin for a great presentation this evening. I feel like we're old friends at this point. And I just wanted to say I was very impressed with your the with the public comments that were you all brought here this evening from your tenants and things like that. And I also want to thank, want to congratulate Perry Vallone on a great team and you know, the folks at Vallone and Constantinople did a really great job putting this presentation together. That all said, I've got, you know, about seven quick questions, hopefully. Hopefully, we can get through this quickly. And, you know, the first, the only thing that really bothered me and kind of stuck in my craw this evening that was a little bit different than others was this focus on revitalization. And, you know, you guys have talked about this in the past and how it's the other side of the tracks. But I heard the word desire undesirables this evening out of someone that was in support of this project. And that there was a barber shop in the neighborhood that that someone was hoping to support this project. Would get rid of that ostensibly or or take an element out of this neighborhood. And you know, this, I I don't gentrification is a loaded and an overused and complex term. But when you're talking about actively attempting to displace people and using racially loaded language like that, I just want to know if that's a a project that you avow and that you support with this? Or if there's another, if there's another goal when you mean revitalization with sort of that line of thought.
So cer- certainly not our comments or or feelings on our side. I I would not use that language to describe a human. Nevertheless, a neighbor. In terms of revitalization, I think and I'll let Steve speak to it as well. Steve's focus as 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 I've gotten to know him, and I think as as you all heard in retail space is is really about thinking locally and trying to help businesses, you know, achieve their goals. So, I don't know, let me let him speak to that. But that's the part that really struck me as we talk about it. I know it's it's a it's a tough conversation with respect to to those businesses, but he has had his career focused on small retailers.
Yeah, in 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 no way are we categorizing anyone.
Almost done.
As desirables. That's not our, that's not our viewpoint. I think our intention is to help the local community provide services that the local community is going to want and need in a quality way and drive additional traffic to the retail on these streets. I mean, I could tell you out of many of the existing tenants, it's not a matter of, you know, us trying to push them out. There's no or 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 anything along those lines. It's it's we're trying, we've been trying to keep them because business is not sufficient to sustain them. So to the extent we can improve foot traffic and create a demand from the local community which supports these retailers and second floor office uses. You know, I guess that's what we are thinking. We're not saying the word revitalization, but that's it it's to your question, we're just looking to help improve what's there so that people can sustain their businesses and provides customers with services that they desire in the neighborhood.
Okay, great. Next question. Nancy Cleaver mentioned that your last project didn't come to fruition. Why was that?
The the last project that we dealt with, so there's a vacant space, the space I mentioned previously was the first property we purchased on on the block. And before we wound up assembling the adjacent pieces, we were just going to renovate that one small project and tenant it. Over when as we assembled the remaining pieces, we didn't want that space to remain vacant. So we were working with, we we created a concept called the Transit Art Cafe. And what we were trying to do was create a space that would have subway artists and local vendors and essentially create a flea market type atmosphere with with transit art kind of musicians involved in it. And we started putting it together. And and Nancy was interested, but we just couldn't get the demand from from all the the tenants to make it happen at that point. There wasn't enough here to draw everyone there.
Okay. What did people in our community tell you in your various conversations that the community needed?
Go ahead, Jordan. Go ahead, Jordan.
I mean, some of the things that I ran through in the in the presentation, certainly a concern about affordability. And it was why we changed from option two, which allows for a little bit higher level, higher rent level, the option one. That was one thing we heard. I mentioned quality architecture. And when I when I think about that and when I ride around in Queens, I can't stand when I see buildings that stick out in, you know, that look like they belong in in Miami and they're sitting in Astoria. And I, you know, I I just think with the design of this building that I I know it's large, but I think that it fits. So that was another thing that we heard. And then on the art side, and I I'm not the expert Kevin and Nico are. But on the art side, it was that developments need to include art spaces. They've gotten pushed. When you talk about real estate, particularly in in Queens, there are groups that are getting pushed out. You have to be deliberate in including in in their inclusion. And so that's what we've tried to do here.
Okay, so just as far, just a follow up on that, was there any mention about the severe lack of medical care in this neighborhood and in this part of Queens in particular? And same with school seats? And is there anything that you think this project could do to contribute to bringing down that deficit a little bit?
Yeah, so definitely. I I was going to add to Jordan's statement that we noticed that people were very positive responses when we talked about medical services. You know, we hadn't heard the school services as much, but we know that they are, it is a requirement and and is in need. So if this feeds back to what I was saying about the second floor of the building, that's that second floor has a substantial amount of space and can be used to accommodate medical services, education, you know, as well as other local office. One of the things we heard, going back to your previous question, was you know, we want to make sure it represents the local community and the needs of the local community. And that's, you know, that's what we're all about. That's what we want to do here. So to the extent we can provide medical services, because I think it's in demand. And from my experience in speaking to tenants, I think that there is a there is there are tenants out there that would like space. So yes, I think we can accommodate on the second floor for some of those uses.
Great. And just to follow up on one other things you you said, Northwell Go Health is very much interested in expanding at the moment, and that's Northwell's not-for-profit entity. It's a couple of folks on our board who work with them and I'm sure would would be delighted to hear from you. Next thing, I love your honesty, Jordan, about sort of, you know, the financial pieces of this and how these community benefits are essentially enabled by this rezoning. Can you tell me how much more is this proposed development financially worth to this developer and owner than it would be if it were built as of right?
I can't tell you that. Not not because I'm trying to be difficult, but I can't. I mean, let let me round up with the team and figure out a way to answer that in a way that you know, respects their privacy. Let me let me get back to you on it.
Okay. And do you, Stephen, or anyone else associated with an ownership stake in this project, own other adjacent property that would benefit from the increase in property value from this property?
No, we do not.
Okay. And last question, will Mufuza be able to open her business in your next part project?
Yes, we're going to talk to any tenants that are interested in opening up their business and give them the opportunity to take a space within the project. Mufuza, you know, we've been working with her for a while and over time we'll find out what exactly her desires are, but as of a few months ago, she wanted to leave and sell the business. Now that the restaurant revitalization fund has come out, she's asked us to help her see if she can get some funding to keep the business open. So you know, she's she's been through something really tough and losing her brother who was in the partner in the business. And so we've been trying to help her out however we can. And, you know, we'd love to keep existing tenants in the new project if we can.
Fantastic. Last two comments for me on this, and then I'm happy to sort of let everyone else move on. Would really appreciate if this, if you could commit to using a hundred percent union labor in the production of this building. Affordable housing is among the worst offenders with workplace violations. And if your commitment to affordable housing is real, that will also mean that all of the other people who are working in this building will also be able to afford where they live as well. And second, please continue to be in dialogue with us about the medical facility. This is something I feel very, very strongly about and is essential to me on the path to sort supporting this project. We have a serious issue in this neighborhood. And it would be really, really important and really a great way if you came back to us with a partner that would fill a significant portion of your lower of your lower floors to address this issue. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick. To be continued. Laura Shepherd.
Hi, thank you. So yes, thank you for this presentation. I'm a Woodside resident and I think this is a great location for a building of this size. It's uniquely transit-rich, pedestrian dense and just therefore I think the inclusion of the parking garage is inappropriate. I understand that you're bound by the current zoning, but like Roz asked, I was wondering if you looked into any zoning classifications that wouldn't require all of this. I understand if such a building was built in Manhattan, Long Island City or Brooklyn in the transit zone like this is, parking requirements would be waived. If a higher proportion of the apartments were affordable, which is something we need anyway, you would be required to build fewer parking spots. And if you commit to accessibility upgrades to the subway and railroad, which we desperately need, we also in addition to staircases and elevators, there's a lack of public bathrooms. You mentioned secure bike parking. I'm reassured by seeing the diagram of the bike, the bike room in the in the blueprints, but also public bike parking. And would really like to see a city bike hub here because this is a major transfer point and hub for many people. That's a.
Does somebody have an answer to Laura's question comment?
No, I I appreciated parking, you know, when I was at HPD, we worked on reducing parking requirements in buildings as well. I don't I don't know that we're allowed to here. You know, generally, it's not it's not a great investment for the owner, you know, to have to do parking.
It's also, it would invite a lot of new cars here, which is something we're trying to transition away from. We also have an issue with traffic violence here. We've had seventeen crashes.
Laura, can I just interject for a second? It's a zoning requirement. They don't have the latitude at this point in time to change that.
Right, but there are different zoning categories that don't have this requirement. Aren't there?
I, you know, I, there, this, this application is. Going through you, Laura, according to certain zoning requirements, so. Jordan, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you change the zoning category on this, you'd have to go back through um city planning, correct?
Double check with Lisa, but I believe, I believe that's correct.
In that case, the parking spots be constructed in a way that they could later be converted to other uses? Like storage or uh, I mean, even like cargo bike parking?
I, I, I mean, I, I, I love the thinking, I think, um. You know, usually a parking area, you know, it's just an open air, it's flat open area would seem to be easily convertible.
All right, um, and another question I had was uh. Since the pandemic uh really severely impacted a lot of young parents, especially women. Will there be any daycare space? Or could you commit to providing some, this is also a convenient location for a lot of parents who would be dropping their kids off before getting on the train?
So, um, thanks, Laura, appreciate it, I would go back to the same the same comments I kind of mentioned to Nick before about the medic, the second floor. I think that second floor is, you know, meant to be a combination of uh community. Services, including daycare and medical, etc. So, and we have a sizable enough footprint where um if we had a, you know, a daycare center. That would, we could accommodate them on the upper floor, on the second floor.
Steve, I know, you know, you've been working hard on on potential tenants, but based on these last two comments, you know, and and we'll tell the board, we'll. We'll double down both on, you know, a, something like Northwell Go is something that's a community focused. Healthcare use and daycare use.
Uh, I just want to add to Laura's comment about the parking, are you gonna have parking uh for electric vehicles? Or uh, you know, uh, car sharing? In this building?
Um, we have to get back to you, I don't think that was planned, I don't think we got into that level of detail yet, we just were were meeting code, but. I'd like to get back to you on that after discussing with the team.
It would also be really easy to do car sharing there.
I've got a great, I've got a great EV client to introduce you to Steve.
Okay.
One other question.
Lisa.
What's that, I'm sorry?
Just wanna say piggyback uh your question about the chargers, because I would, I think that's EV vehicle charging is. Hugely important to the district and all over the city now, and I just want to piggyback that because you also. Would get benefits from the federal government and the state, uh, New York's Charge Ready Program gives four thousand dollars per charging port. For level two charging stations at public workplace or multi dwelling parking lots. So there'd be benefits for you and big benefits for the community, I'd love to see more than just two or three, you know, charging stations. We really need to encourage people to switch to EV, okay, well.
Thanks, Lori, I, what, is that Laura? I'm sorry.
One more point, um, will there be charging capabilities in the bike room as a lot of people are transitioning to electric bicycles?
We could look into that as well, that's, I don't see, I don't see a problem with that.
Thank you, appreciated.
Sure.
The next person is Kat Bloomfield.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful, um, I'm a new community board uh two member, so I'm really excited to be here. I have a few questions regarding um the the pop, the residential space as well as the um commercial space, so first. It, I know in communities, it's really important for us to see our community reflected back to us, so. You know, I know you're partnering with an art uh with a dance studio, um, so I'm look, I'm wondering if you would commit to putting the community front and center. In this development by making the street level commercial space, um, the community art space, so we can see our community. Like in in the community, um, and then I, I mean, I can just run through the questions first, if or you know, if that's.
Yeah, that would be great, Kat, why don't you do that?
Cool, I'll talk, I'll talk quickly, um, and then also given the current population of the neighborhood. It would be better for um the development to offer like quality housing to existing residents. So I would like to know, would you commit to fifty percent affordable housing to accommodate the people who are already here? Um, and then bu- building on that, like how confident are you in filling the space with long term? Residential residents, because there are other similar developments in the neighborhood that have been done and finished for a while and they stand largely vacant. And then um going back to building and tenants. I, Queens District Two is thirty-two percent Hispanic, three percent black and thirty-five percent Asian. All that amounts to seventy percent minority. Will you commit to seventy percent or more minority owned businesses as tenants in the space to again reflect the community? And then finally, um, what kind of businesses would be tenants in this building? Is there going to be preferential rent for woodside based businesses, especially those that are mi- minority owned, whether they are certified or not? I can put all that in the in the chat if that was a lot, I got you, like.
Yeah, that would be fun.
Okay.
Okay, so I think most of these are Steve's questions, so let me just take the affordable portion and then hand the rest off to Steve. So. The. The fifty-four units of affordable, I just want to explain how it works, so. Those go through a lottery system where half of those units are reserved for CB two residents. And then through, you know, what we would want to do here. Every community that I work with wants to do it is try to do a pretty aggressive marketing campaign locally. You know, I'd want to talk to Woodside on the Move and NHS of Queens and the Board. There, you know, there are lots of other good organizations, church groups, Filipino community. Around here to try to effectively stuff the ballot box with. With local residents to apply for those units so that a higher percentage will wind up being people who are. Who are from the community. With respect to the vacant units that you see around the neighborhood, I think that's really unfortunate. In my experience, usually that's when you have. Some developer who's coming from the outside, you know, who just sees this as an asset class. And thought that they were going to be able to get a certain level of rent for their residential that they're not able to get, and then the units have taken. One of the differences you have here with with Stephen, his group is people really, you know, are from the neighborhood and and know the neighborhood and I think. You know, you'll see the units priced appropriately for that, so you don't have vacant spaces, last thing that that he would want as an owner is to have vacant units. Steve, I want you to answer the.
Yeah, that's fine, so I'll start with the uh community spaced uh front and center on Roosevelt. You know, we have been speaking with Maranostrom and, you know, discussing for a while now this. This uh community arts hub uh that we've been working to create. And you know, there have been many other not for profits out there and other groups that. You know, have have attempted to mix uh real estate and community groups with the arts. And they um, they have a a short lifespan to them because. Many times they fail economically, uh because either. The real estate owner can't accommodate um that and 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 still have a viable business and. But if the real estate owner charges the the community facility arts user a higher rent, then the then the arts community facility user can't. Have a viable um business and they can't afford it either, so. You know, what Nicola, Kevin and myself have had a lot of conversations about have been. How do we look at real estate and the arts and these community spaces in a way? Where we can create a program and structure something that's feasible for everyone and has long term viability to it? And usually putting the spaces up front and center on the on the street. Is detrimental uh to the real estate and the community arts group. So, you know, we've, we've, we think we've created a a platform in this community arts hub. Where uh we can create something that's sustainable for both sides, and if we can do that, it's uh. There's ability to repeat it in other locations in a model that works, so you know, although we'd love to. Give them space on the street uh with front and center by visibility. Practically speaking, I don't think it works and it's been proven to 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 fail in other in other. Instances, that being said as well. You know, we're, we're trying to figure creative ways to give them the via, the visibility that they need, including like a banner system, a nice big banner system on the corner. That attracts people to the arts and maybe a mural on the back of the building that's visible to the transit hub. That allows everyone to know about the community facility space also. One other thing I'll add to that, on the second floor, you're gonna have a lot of visible. Frontage uh to Roosevelt Avenue, and so the businesses that occupy those uh upper floors. Can uh have a lot of visibility and be community type uses. So, so I hope that answers your question on the community space on Roosevelt.
We would like to add on that because I think with a, it's a something perspective from our, from our perspective, it's good to to know as well.
We, we, we sort of like the idea of being on the lower level because one, it gives us a space which is safe, it's a safe space. It's a space that's enclosed that we can, that all this, all the spaces are looking at each other. The other thing is that we're allowed to have twelve foot clearance, so for a dance studio, that is like, that makes me, that blows my mind, like to have twelve feet. Above us with no columns, so column free twelve foot clearance is something that you rarely find unless you're rehearsing at like a Broadway. You know, at at Forty Second Street Studios where all the Broadway shows uh go, so this is high quality space. Even though it's not on street level, it is, it is like, it has so many parts of it that we want uh that work for us.
And unfortunately, even in Manata, you see it not right now, you see a lot of uh of facilities, arts facilities are visible, but they don't have the space they deserve what they want. So we, we chose a different road and and Stephen was able to accommodate us already with design, and so we are guaranteed basically. Column free twelve ceiling, which is to drive, to die and to dream of.
Yeah, column free space is hard to find, so.
So, I mean, just to add to that, we're excited about this because if, like I said, this. This not for profit that we've created called Queens Comm Art, if it works here. Then we can um help roll it out into other locations in a proven model that works.
Can you, um, can you respond to the question about um prefer, preferential rents to woodside businesses? Especially those that are minority owned?
So, um, I could tell you just from, you know, being part of the project for, you know, a long time at this point. And having available spaces. What usually happens is whatever the makeup of the community is. Is where you get the most activity and 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 interest and demand for space. So I think a natural progression of this will be that. You know, most of these spaces will be filled with local users uh that that represent the community, whatever that may be, right?
Did you give a per square foot rent that you were uh that was in your pro forma?
We were projecting somewhere around sixty-five dollars per square foot uh in our, in our pro forma. But, you know, we're, we're not sure where the market's gonna be when this, when this building is. You know, when this building is up and running, if you were leasing space during COVID, you know, your rents were much cheaper than that.
What are your rents now or what were they, you know, in twenty nineteen?
The rents, so the, the. The contractual rents in the space are anywhere from fifty-five dollars to sixty dollars per square foot, the reality is. Be- because of the limited foot traffic currently over here, we've been giving tenants breaks, including during COVID. So they're actually paying uh less than that, you're paying less than what they're contractually obligated to pay us at the moment. Because we've been trying to help tenants survive.
Right, understood.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's see, I'm just trying to look through the list of the other questions.
I, I would just say, Kat, it sounds like um with respect to minority owned businesses, I, you know, I think. Steve would love help on identifying potential tenants and we should talk more about it, let's. Let's talk tomorrow.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
I would be, I would absolutely love to help um in this way, um, I'm the, you know. My organization does this, and so I'm, I'm, you know, I just want us all to. I want the community be to be reflected in this building um in every way that is important.
That's what we want as well, so we should talk.
Thank you, Kat, um, Catherine, did you have another question, I know um you had a follow up, I think.
Uh, yeah, I did have a follow up, um, Kat actually brought it up, it was just about um. Other developments in the neighborhood and around the neighborhood that I've seen go up place these past few years. They actually remain largely vacant, so I was wondering how confident they are in making sure that these spaces are rented. At market rate, and if there's any way to actually increase the affordable housing to fifty percent. Like Kat mentioned.
So, um, with regards to renting the units, uh, I think, you know, this site sits next to two MTA lines. So uh some of the approvals and process will be lengthy. So I think we have some time before we're gonna be coming to market with any of these units, number one, number two. The last thing we want to do is have vacant units and. You know, whatever market is at that time, we're confident that there will be demand here, it's just a matter of supply, demand and the rents are charging, so. We will rent the spaces uh and we'll adjust rents, you know, accordingly until until we're at a place where we do rent them. That's, that's part of, you know, the developer or the the owner's um risk is. You don't want vacant spaces, so uh we're not gonna sit there with vacant spaces and ask for astronomical rents, if you know, it's not realistic. I think, Jordan, I mean, chime in if you, if you want, but on on the fifty percent affordable. You know, I don't think that was an option for us, given, given the uh, given the programs that were available, number one, and. You know, the financial um model associated with them, we looked, we looked at many, many different uh programs. And at the end of the day, it's gotta, you know, it's gotta be a marriage between uh the public and the private, and this was. You know, the only program that that worked for everybody and allowed us to provide affordable units.
That's right.
Okay, I think um those were the last questions, um, I'm gonna kinda. Give this a going, going, gone, if there are any other uh members that have questions for. The sixty-two oh fourteen, now is your opportunity to raise your hand. Um, if your hand is already raised, I, I, I'm hard pressed to recognize you, so. So I, I guess put your hand down and then re-raise if you must, but anyway, um, it looks like. There is one person with their hand raised. Laura, do you still have a question or a cat? You both still have your hand raised.
Yeah.
Yes, oh, sorry.
Laura, go ahead. Who was that, I, I'm sorry, I didn't follow who that was, there were two people with their hands raised, one was.
I did.
Laura, you go ahead.
Okay, um, sorry, Kat, um, I just had a suggestion for a um black owned business that does secure bike parking. I thought Kat's suggestion uh to um. Give a lot of spa- to give space to women and minority owned businesses was a good one, uh, it's just called Uni and I'd encourage you to take a look at them.
We have a eleven AM call scheduled tomorrow with you.
Oh. Fantastic, all right, glad to hear it, thank you.
So they were just, I don't know if you saw the story, but they were just included in, there's a Gotham article. So they were just, I don't know if you saw the story, but they were just included in, there's a government's article on in uh for the inside space for the bike storage, which I thought was really cool. Um, so we wanted to talk to them, uh, reached out, and uh, so Shabazz and I are talking tomorrow.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Great. And Kat, you get the last question.
Great, thank you. Um, I, I just want to piggyback on the um fifty percent affordable. Um, if, like, I understand that there's a program that y'all are trying to do um, to, to make sure that the business, like, I understand the businesses, that, you know, balancing all the things. I'm just really wondering, like, maybe there's more creative ways to make sure that um this space, um, at least fifty percent of the units are, like, like, continue to stay available to woodside residents. I actually had to leave Astoria and move here because I was priced out of my home. And, and I just, I don't want other people to have that experience. Um, so I'm, I'm wondering, are there more public-private partnerships? Like, would you be able to go do some more research to find, you know, another option, maybe a partnership or whatever, to be able to make sure that the people who are in this community are, like, allowed to stay here? I can see this as a domino situation, if there's other, you know, because once one of the, you know, one thirteen-story building goes up, you know, I mean, we're, we're, we're probably looking at more, and if we don't set the trend for what is, you know, like, being community-first and really being focused on this, it will reproduce really negative patterns that have happened in other neighborhoods.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, you know, keeping, keeping honest on all of this. Um, and, and again, I come from the affordable housing world. There, unfortunately, there used to be programs for fifty percent affordable buildings, but those have been eliminated in favor of only a hundred percent affordable buildings, which are great. Um, it's what I've done for years. Um, the unfortunate part is that they're, they're backed up and, you know, right now, it's gonna take eight years or so to get an, an affordable project financed. Um, that, that project also, you know, we, we looked into it and doesn't, doesn't pencil out well here. Um, but with respect to the neighborhood, we do have somewhat of a solution, which is a, a really proactive um and deliberate effort working with community organizations to, you know, let people know about the housing opportunity and try to get them in the door. Um, both for those, you know, very low, you know, the, the, the very low rents for the forty percent, sixty percent units. Um, and uh, you know, the, again, the hope is with, by adding the additional units that 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 drives rents down eventually. Um, it doesn't always happen as quickly as we'd like it to. But that is the hope.
Jordan, um, I, I just want to add that, um, you know, there's been a lot of, um, the opportunity to rent aggressively to section eight voucher holders, you know, is a way to include additional affordable units.
Yeah.
And it doesn't compromise your rent.
Yeah.
What it does is enable uh people of more modest means to live in your building.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I just want to add that to the conversation that, you know, there's a way that, that, that that's not hard to do. Um, and it doesn't, you know, it doesn't threaten your rent roll. It just, you know, uh, welcomes people of more modest means to your building.
On, on, you know, to, on top of it, it's guaranteed rent, so I think, you know, it, it's usually very good for the owner.
Right. So, yeah, so I, you know, that's, that kind of, I guess with that conversation about um, you know, uh additional affordability, um, we can adjourn this meeting, and everybody can go and watch uh the Biden speech now, if that's what um, is next for you. So, um, thank you all for, thank you, the public, for attending this meeting. Um, and for all the community board members of your comments and questions, and for the sixty-four oh two team uh for uh being uh so responsive. So, um, have a great evening, everybody, and uh, um, we'll see you at the next community board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.